The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will follow up with Jordan Cavan. Dear Lord God, just once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to give you thanks. Dear Lord God, we thank you for your many blessings bestowed upon each and every one of us and upon our family members. Dear Lord God, we thank you, Lord God, for your blessings bestowed upon the city of Delaware. Dear our God, now we ask that you please continuously bless our mayor pro temp and city council members, our city manager, city attorney, and all department heads on tonight as we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Delaware and all of the city employees of the city of Delaware. And we pray in everything we do, we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David. All right, can I get approval of the agenda? Any motion?
Second.
Motion?
Got motion.
Okay, ten. All those in favor? Um, approval of the minutes, regular meeting, December fourteenth. Can I get a motion?
I beg your pardon.
All those in favor? Um, my report, basically, uh, COVID is all over us. Um, there's, uh, we get thirty, forty, uh, fifty cases a day in the Dillon County area. Uh, death, uh, the last time I looked was sixty. Puts us at about two point two percent mortality, which is a little ahead of the national average. Um, you know, uh, we have excellent care at our hospital. Uh, and if they deteriorate, then, you know, they need time to transfer to the flocks. Um, the hospital is, uh, very, very busy. Uh, it is not necessarily COVID patients. Um, we've, we've kind of, uh, and we were just talking about it. Uh, we've seen about nine months of people, uh, kind of avoiding healthcare just because they don't want to go up there where, where COVID is and, or where they thought it was. And as a result, we've got a lot of people that have touched on their illnesses and now they're, they're in a much, uh, much worse situation. So, um, that, that's kind of the status of the hospital and, and the county. Um, you know, we probably have, I would say, a couple of three weeks where we're gonna see that, that spike and I think that, uh, we'll see it ease off. Uh, we do have some vaccine. Um, there was skepticism about the, the vaccine by a lot of people. And, uh, I thought, and I told Johnny Daniel, I says, not that I'm trying to be a story, but people need to take this vaccine. And I figured as much as people knew how much, um, I love life, um, if they saw me getting it, you know, they'd be, well, if he's getting it, you know, it must be okay. And I, you know, I don't know whether that went over, but, but we need, if you get the opportunity, you need to get it, you need to take it. Uh, the nation needs about a hundred and fifty, two hundred million people to have this vaccine, to have that herd immunity, and then we'll see, we'll see some real change. And my honest feeling is, is that, that, um, I think some of the vaccine, uh, distribution is, uh, being held up politically. And I, I think that we'll see a change in that pretty quickly. Um, and that, that's sad on the one side, but, but, you know, it, it doesn't matter. Our end point is herd immunity. And we need to get that. Um, I, I think some, one way that maybe the paper can help us with this is, um, it, it is almost a, a daily change about what the status of vaccines are with us. If we could, uh, the city, and, and I'll help the city give you that information, or you can get that information directly from, um, Karen, uh, in our office. She's a nurse practitioner, that Karen Arnett, that, that kind of handles that for us. Um, and she can give you the CDC, and you can probably get that yourself, but what those guidelines are, and, um, maybe search out what the, uh, what the availability is. And I think that would be a tremendous service for the, the people, the community and, um, you know, so that they would know where to go. Uh, I, you, you hear people, they've got a little bit here, and there's a rush, and people go get it. Right now, it's seventy and above, um, and those are the, the most vulnerable. But, um, there are a lot of people below seventy years old that need to have that vaccine. Um, my first vaccine gave me a flu long pain. I had the Pfizer, the one that had to be frozen. But, um, my second one, I'm a little worried, my second one was above the shot because I didn't even get sore and, uh, I had, uh, no fever, chills, or any kind of reaction. And I had a pretty significant reaction to the high dose flu this year. But, um, just, you know, some questions, Glenn. Um, are, are we gonna do anything with that, um, information that they gave us about downtown Dillon? Where we on now?
We're waiting for their last invoice of getting paid, and as soon as they send it, I'm hoping they will send us what they showed us, right, our copy and the note, like they have received. We're still waiting on the last.
And, and we're, we're, we're January. I know that, um, you know, we've got budget probably starting in March or April.
Yeah, first of March, yeah.
Um, the, um, you know, let's include in that renovation of that building, uh, you know, uh, and, and I don't know if the consensus that we're gonna use that as a police station. Now, they, they had some kind of, uh, they wanted to use it as something different to develop downtown. Um,
They want to see that possibly be a
Restaurant.
Incubator.
No, incubator, yeah. It was a, it was an incubator for
Small businesses.
Small businesses. Um, that's what I said. And I, you know, and, and that's a big building. I mean, it's what, five or six thousand square feet? I think that's, I'm not sure that that's not a bad idea. It, it's not a, it, it's a good idea, but maybe we could do that in another venue. I think that we could get a, um, a, a great value and a great presence. Right now, where you see the police department, it's kind of hard to find it.
Well, and Dave and I talked, Kevin, he's in the mountains, I thought he did that, but, you know, I've talked to, based on a schedule that First Bank has said that they should be completed
Right.
with their new building, this, this early summer.
Right.
Um, I still think it's probably from that point, if that happens, still at least twelve months before we can even get into the building.
Okay.
Um, 'cause there's gonna be some renovations that's gonna be needed. How much, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. Or, you know, we need to probably include that in our budget. And, and I really, and I, I stand corrected. I thought that we could approve that last year, but, um, um, replacement of four cars a year. Um, we really need to look at that. Um,
And that's, that was in the budget notes.
Okay.
It's something for us to look forward to.
To look at for the next.
What we're gonna buy the parking and stuff, you know, you lived in land behind the First Bank.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you came back with a, a bigger price that they want. We never heard any anything else about it. So where are we?
It is, um, that. Then, we, we paid an offer that y'all agreed to, and then
I think we need to revisit that.
So, uh, with that being said, um,
And helping the police department.
Yeah. I guess the council is leaning towards going to the First Bank building with the police department. Um, should we then have available parking for the cars? We got to start doing this if we're gonna go that route.
Yeah, now parking would be a big issue because
They take a loan.
Well, yeah, but at the same time, we've got public parking there on River Road Avenue that Roentgen's been utilized by First Bank and their customers. I mean,
It's both sides of the street.
Both sides of the street. There's probably, I don't know, ten, twelve.
Don't we want to go forward and look into?
Yeah, we'd love to. We'd love to. So, but we've got, we've got an agreement to that.
When we offered, we offered sixty and they wanted ninety or seventy-five?
Yeah.
You probably look at those two buildings beside it.
I mean, 'cause don't we have a new restaurant? Is that enough?
We're hoping, and I think he's here tonight. We're hoping.
Well, I mean, I think that'd be a great access, too, you know, helping the public. They could park there, and they want to go to the restaurant. So, I mean, I think that's something that we need to lean on, trying to find out if we're gonna go that, you know, way around. Yeah.
And then there's, you know, there's another building on that parcel of, even though it's separate, there's like four or five parcels of land behind it. There is one structure on which is owned by someone else. I think even a hundred thousand for that.
I mean, we're, we're not having five buildings to replace the apartment. We're gonna remodel one, but I think, like I'm saying, we could invest in that property and those buildings and own that property. We could do a lot with it.
Well, that, uh, what was it, Farmers, Farmers Market?
Yeah, but if they want to do that, I mean, that's a
They want to park there. We could park here, you know, like Johnny said, but when the, I mean, Farmers Market probably is not gonna be active.
It's not every day.
Probably all the weekend.
If they, if they got family to do that.
Yeah.
But right now, we haven't done things that, oh, I think we went through twice with an offer and they shut that offer down to this right hand with that.
Sure, I'd love to see the Farmers Market.
We don't, we'll, we'll reach out to them, see what they really think. That's the position we
Or look at both, or really pick up since we did that lot. And I think if we can get that asset some kind of way, that it would be a plus to us down the line when we get another one. They would have funds in order to do it.
I think before they invest, they will see what's gonna happen at the, um, junior high school and see how that goes over there. You know, I mean, that goes over there, then that
That would be, that would be nice.
You know, it might open up the opportunity.
Though I think the clean, the property's been cleaned up. I think it's still a, a brown spilled area, but it's cleaned up where you can do stuff on. Probably don't think it'd be useful.
Dr. Wallace, is the hospital at a hundred percent capacity with the COVID patients?
Um, you know, the, the, all right, all right, is it, is it COVID patients? No, it is, it is all diseases. And what I mentioned was, is that, you know, you've gone nine months without paying attention or avoiding healthcare because you didn't want to go up there and get a COVID infection. Um, the, it, it's just full of sick, sick people. And that being said, um, if you look at where you get the COVID, it's not in the office. If, if you're trying not to, it's not in your churches, it's not in restaurants. It's when you go to these family gatherings or friends' house where you say, oh, he's not gonna get it. Well, it's not a venereal disease. It's just out there, and you don't know. And your worst, your, your worst infection, your, your, your most contagious time is twenty-four hours before you're symptomatic. And that's, that's the, that's the bad thing about it.
And you don't know when you're gonna be symptomatic. You don't know when you get it.
Well, another question I have for you, I mean, since you're
No, that's
on the council, and I mean, I'd like to get this out to the public. Where is the distribution sites for the vaccine to be distributed?
Well, um, you know, and this was, my partner was not, I got mine from Cloud. My partner was not with McCloud. It was with the Center of Disease Control. And let me tell you something a little scary. I got something on my cell phone that I think I better get rid of. And it looks a little bit like Mark of the Beast, you know? But that's the thing that you scan that says you've been vaccinated.
I would follow up with all that. Um, I had, D H has reached out to me late last week.
I gotta do something here?
Yeah, they have scheduled two dates, January twenty-seventh, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe the twenty-eighth, and February twenty-fourth, to do vaccines for what they call Phase One A, and I believe One B. Now, One A are first responders, those folks, also those folks even in the medical field or frontline people. A week ago, this past Friday, McCloud's here opened the door for, for One A. And we, first responders, firemen and police had the opportunity to get their shots taken in. And it's been B for every Friday through the end of January. Well,
They ran out.
They ran out, and they haven't gotten any more either.
Supposed to have gotten today.
Yeah, this past Friday, we didn't have anybody to go, but they have them. You said they got some.
Well, they were supposed to have received their next shipment, but, you know, they're, they're throwing it away in Washington, and we can't get it down here.
So, that is why I, that's, that's what I know so far. Now, on a personal note, my mother is eighty-five. She wants to get it. So I went on the D H website over the weekend, actually Friday afternoon, and looked, see if McCloud, if you can schedule anything with McCloud. At this time, McCloud's not taking any appointments, either he or he or their hospitals in their network that I can see. So I looked through N U S C, which is in Florence and also over in Maryland. I got her scheduled. The earliest I could get her scheduled for, for her first dose is the second week in April, and that's in Florence, I mean, in Maryland. Um, and if something changes,
We're, we're gonna be, we are at a group site. Like, our crowd at Dillon Family had
three hundred doses. That's, so that's a hundred and fifty people. Um, we are told that we will get some in a couple of weeks. But you, you know, you can't make appointments for people without, you know, and, and believe me, you have to go by those guidelines when you, when you receive it. So, I mean, in order, people have to fall in those guidelines in order to get
Does our volunteer fire department follow the guidelines?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, um, are we encouraging our first responders?
There are a lot of there.
We've asked them to go, yeah.
When I took my second dose, there was a lot of there. I don't know, do you know how many doors it went?
I think I had, I had some that was gone, but I had two that went the first Friday and got, and I had some went the second Friday, and they returned out.
So we know of two in the police department. I only know of one that I know for sure. I believe about a dozen.
Do you think Dr. Wallace could go in and encourage these guys to take this, or females? I mean, I don't know if he'd be willing to do that or not. I mean, to let them know how crucial it is to take this.
And then we've talked about it, and, you know, again, I've, I've read where different people are doing different things. Um, you know, doing something financially for them to get, you know, I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not. Uh, I think we're all adults, and they, and they go have their own mind and not be incentivized to go do it.
I'm like this, I'm novice to what all it tells in the last day. I'll be honest with you. Dr. Wallace knows a whole lot more than anybody in this council.
I took
I, yeah, and he's taken it. So I can think that he would be a good spokesperson to, to tell our first responders, look, this is why you need to take it. I can't do what Dr. Wallace has to do.
Well, that's life for dead.
Life for dead.
And it can be, it can be. Um, and, and nothing, nothing throwing rocks at our first responders, but, you know, they're young and
Yep.
I'm trying.
And they're not
Twenty-four-year-old kids just die.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
That's right. I mean, but this is, uh, if, if you wanna win the game, I mean, if you wanna win the game, and, and the winner of the game is getting rid of COVID and getting back to our life, you gotta have herd immunity. And that isn't the hundred million that's vulnerable. That's the three hundred and thirty-three million that we have in this nation. And we need at least sixty percent to be vaccinated and have herd immunity so we get rid of this pandemic. I mean, that's just a down and dirty up. They can say, I'm not worried about me. I'm not, if I get it, I'm gonna be fine. Well, you wanna get rid of it. That virus needs to, to infect somebody with antibodies and it go, I found a bad house, you know? And, and it needs to see that over and over again. It goes away. And that's, that's what happens.
I, I have one question, which is really off the base of our, our council meeting, but it has to do with COVID. Is the idea of taking vaccine, once you get your second dose, right now, you gotta have two doses for one of them anyway? Do you take it annually?
Um, we don't know that yet. The, the design, this is a totally different design of vaccines, and it really is revolutionary. Uh, I think it's gonna have some big ramifications in other areas. Um, the, the Pfizer is two dose that has to be frozen. Moderna is, doesn't have to be kept at that cold temperature. Um, and, um, Johnson &amp; Johnson is one step. See, the virus is a messenger RNA virus, which is a short thing. It goes into the cell and tells the cell what to do. And it, it, it couples with DNA. Well, the, the, Johnson &amp; Johnson is actually a DNA virus, is a DNA strand that, that is a vaccine. Um, and it just has to be given one time, doesn't have all the restraints with human code. The answer to your question, I think this is probably gonna be a three-year thing. You know, you think of the last time, Ebola was the last time that, uh, a, a COVID virus was, you know, a SARS virus was a part of a pandemic, you know, which was a number of years ago. It isn't like the flu, the influenza virus, which mutates very rapidly and, and, you know, so we have to have a vaccine every year. I think this is a once every, every three to five, even, I think.
Hey, were you seeing a decris, decris of the flu coming in your office, patients coming in?
Well, yes. And, and I think there's, there's twofold reasons for that. Um, people are very anxious with flu shots, one. But the other is, be careful.
Wear a mask.
Wear a mask, and you're washing your hands, and, and, I mean, you know, if somebody comes up to you without a mask on, I mean, I'm, I'm offended. I mean, well, I'm not gonna hit them, but
Fisk up.
It's a, you're like, yeah. And that's what, well, the bad thing is, I find, I find the awful thing is I fisk up the guy who's above the woman.
Yeah.
I, I can't help it, you know? It just didn't matter if I fisk up a woman. Anyway, no, that's, but that's all I have. Um, you know, it's, um, thank you for letting me serve.
All right, um, I'll just follow up to briefly. I have a lot of human assets anyway you should have in your packet. Uh, we have a general election scheduled for Tuesday, April the sixth. That's for December three, five, and six. And the books open noon January twenty-second, close on February first at noon. If you have that in your packet, I believe. I think it's already been in the newspaper and on Facebook, and it'll be back in the newspaper, I think, again, another week.
I do.
Nineteen?
Okay.
Tomorrow.
What's that?
It'll be advertised in the newspaper tomorrow.
So you can start the
Filing process starts January twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
And ends on Friday, I mean, ends on Monday, February first.
Pardon?
Twenty-second. That's a Friday.
It's Friday.
It's Friday.
It's Friday.
Reached out again through the internet to Department of Revenue's website, finally saw that we now have been approved on their behalf of allowing Sunday alcohol sales in Dillon. Um, printed out a little bit of information, but I've been asked about fees and that kind of thing. The city does not collect any fees whatsoever for Sunday alcohol sales. Whoever has a license to sell alcohol on a normal basis still has to go through Department of Revenue if they want to have Sunday alcohol sales. And then whatever that fee is, and it's, Jay and I talked with Friday, um, whatever that fee is, is kind of part of the fines on their website. But if there is a fee that's being charged, from my understanding, that fee is paid to Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue in turn sends us that fee to use however we see fit. Um, I looked again today to get some, see if I could find some more information. And for local option permit, this is to allow to sell alcoholic liquor by the drink on Sundays, which would mean restaurants, which would mean liquor, beer, and wine. It is actually three thousand dollars for fifty-two weeks, or two hundred dollars per Sunday if you don't wanna do it every Sunday. Um, and then I could not find what the fee was for the seven-day on and off premise beer and wine permit. Um, I could not on through their website. It's harder to get any information on that, to see what those fees are. But whatever fees are paid for these permits to Department of Revenue who oversees alcoholic, uh, and beer licenses.
Plus, they have to pay a three hundred dollar fundable fee for the application, three hundred dollars, even to do it.
And y'all, your office does a lot of that stuff.
We do. If the renewals are coming up, June first or May thirty-third.
May thirty-first is when
Then it'll be three thousand for alcohol, beer, wine, and it's gonna be the twelve hundred dollars for just beer and wine. Byame, it's a byame.
Byame.
So the charge will double to add the hundred and four days for Sundays for over two years.
It is now available, they purchase their license, um, through the Department of Revenue. So that's, that's been handled and taken care of.
Have you heard any grocery stores yet picking it up?
I haven't.
Not at all.
We don't have any restaurants at this time.
That sell on Sunday, right?
Well, it's pretty high right now between here and May, but I think when they renew, you're gonna see that some
Uh, the only restaurant I know that serves, I'm assuming they serve still alcohol, is the Mexican restaurant. Because Keene's is closed now on Sunday, if I'm not mistaken.
The beer and wine's affordable, but the, the other is, thirteen hundred dollars for fifteen Sundays is pretty, pretty steep. Thirteen hundred bucks compared to May, thirty thirty. That's what, eighty-seven dollars a Sunday. It's gonna be twenty-seven dollars a hundred, twenty-eight dollars here for fifty-two.
But that's, that has been now granted by Department of Revenue to anybody that has their license and wants to sell on Sunday, has to go through Department of Revenue to get that permit for Sunday sale.
You would have better impression than they do, I would.
But if you already have an existing license, you won't have to go, it's a different process. You're adding it on. So you won't have to go through all the same scenario, I wouldn't think. I don't know about the paper run, but I don't think so. If you already have an existing license.
What I read today was if you had an existing license, all you had to do was fill something out online, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's what I read.
Well, it's just not based on volume, like with a grocery store.
No, no.
It's just a one set price or something.
Yeah, it's not, it's not based off gross sales. No, not at all, from what I, from what I read. Um, and then whatever, like I said, whatever, because you're just charging a permit here.
Right.
Or they're just charging a permit. And my understanding is that fee then comes back to the city to be used however we see, to be a pleasure right now. Um, Chief Lane and I met, back in December, I think I told you, we met with Spectrum Cable Company about Wi-Fi downtown. And had a little, probably about an hour meeting with those folks. Then we met with them this past week for about two hours via a Zoom meeting to talk about the Wi-Fi and some other issues that we're trying to, to work out with those folks. They are, give us a plan hopefully here in the next month of what it will cost the city to have Wi-Fi down in the downtown area. Um, the hardest part about it is trying to find locations to put their equipment. So if it's something that we can do afford, we, we'll go to different, different business owners on Main Street area and see if they can allow for these folks to put their, their stuff on their building. But, uh, open up some doors for Wi-Fi downtown. But they brought up some things that they said they're doing in public places that I really haven't thought about, was in public parks. They're putting them in public parks as well. Um, and they had a big push really because of COVID, giving people the opportunity to do virtual schooling in a, in a park. Um, so maybe some opportunities there as well. So maybe some opportunities there as well. Now with this, I've been reached out by local nonprofit who is willing to help us possibly to front some upfront money with this, but until we know exactly what that upfront money is, we're not sure if this is gonna happen or not, but we'll find out hopefully in the next month what that cost would be. We do know that there will be a monthly fee for the Wi-Fi, but not sure what the upfront cost is at this time.
Now, the old water tank downtown, has it already got too much stuff on it?
Yeah, um, probably too far away to do, because the way they're talking initially was they were looking at possibly three to five locations within the downtown area to cover really from the courthouse to Memphis Church here on that. So first and foremost, we do have a building in the middle town that we own.
Yeah.
About to get there, put some further here. And maybe something that they can, we can negotiate to do again if they will, maybe some of their projects. We don't know that yet. One of the things they said was if you ride around town, you'll see coves that stand, you know, beside the road that are laid. Well, we don't have any of those downtown that I know of. At least not on the street, and maybe somewhere in the alley, but I'm not sure. So they're gonna do some more things and look at, kind of go from there. Events wise, I can tell you that February is usually a good month for it. For our Father Dollar Dance has been postponed, not canceled. We're gonna postpone it and maybe try to do something sometime in the spring for that. I know we've always had good turnout and there's no way we can do it this year based on what the governor says, that we can only have an indoor facility. And then trying to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Just to think it would be a good time to do it in February, and hopefully we'll do it next spring or the summer. We are still planning to do our St. Patty's Day and Celebrate May event. We were still scheduled, but that could change here next time windows off, April. Well, St. Patty's Day is middle of March and then Celebrate May is the end of April. So hopefully our next meeting in February will have a better gauge of what we're gonna do with St. Patty's Day. Right now they're still on the calendar, Tuesday place. And our girls softball program registration right now is getting, you know, first of February. Hopefully it'll be better than our softball registration did, because we didn't have anybody that wanted to participate in basketball. I mean, and I understand this, again, that's an indoor activity. We had a lot of people who did participate last summer, once we got started for softball. Hopefully that'll take off, and we'll be able to do that. And lastly, always have something financial that we have to deal with. But not dealing with it tonight, just give you some information purposes. I'll come back next month with, with more information. But we're having issues with what we call our commercial garbage truck. That is the front letter garbage truck that picks up the big green dumpsters. And this is about five or six years old.
Yes, that's about.
Five years old, it seems like every time we use it, it's down. The torque began on us today.
That was brand new five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, brand new five years ago.
That's a piece of equipment that generates some money, of course, not sure how much exactly. But it's, you know, brand new, it's roughly $275,000. We do have a spare, it's probably fifteen years old or older.
But we're doing, having hydraulic issues with it?
Hydraulic, computer, electrical.
Heating and hydraulic.
You name it, we have an issue, but next month I'll come back with you with some more information about it. And a plan of attack right now, as it tears up, we either try to fix it in-house or send it back to the dealerships, see what they can do with it. This probably gone back here in the last six months, two or three times, at least. And then basically it's always another...
But what does that cost, like six miles of foot, remember?
So that's what, you know, we're trying to get those numbers on that.
What'd you do as a backup when it goes into?
So that's, see that's, that's my big problem. See, I got a truck that's sixteen years old that's trying to be a backup for, you know, this one, you got real it, so it's, you know, a deal. So now I'm worried about, you know, if this truck goes down, we'll be in line without, not gonna have to pick it up to pick up at all. That's, that's what worries me now, I'm laying in bed. We had a day about, what, ten-thirty this morning when you called me. We were picking up the dumpsters here on Rappah不尽, and we had cans stuck in the air at Starbucks. That just would come down. Could do that, and potentially after about an hour, then, after about an hour, it left that the works?
But we don't have any cans anymore, do we?
Right now we got one mechanic.
The Davis is doing it?
No, he's under attack.
Who you doing that?
Jimmy on the phone. So I'll come back next month, give you some numbers and a plan of attack and kind of go from there on it, but...
Y'all, so don't you have, you'd have to replace those tires once a year?
More than that, that should be one.
Month?
That should be one, going through land, you know about that, don't you? It's a big thing. We'll, um, we'll come back with some more information next month and have a plan of attack.
Did we have a circle of last year in San Antonio?
Circle of.
It wasn't in, uh, it wasn't in the garbage.
That's all I had at this time.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
That Resolution seven twenty, Resolution eight twenty, did the acquisition airplane go okay? That is for the property RJTS and...
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, the one with RJTS, those papers were signed at the end of December and filed Friday, January first. And then on the other one, we hadn't completed that one, but that one wasn't, you know, let's get completed.
If I can, before you move on, P D R T A, do we have actual stop, stopping port for them?
Yeah, there are stops.
Are they identified in NRC?
There's signs, the little...
Little small signs.
Little small signs.
I mean, tell...
There's one, yeah, there's one out actually in front of this building on Commerce. There's one in front of Walmart. I wanna think there's one or two on Rappah不尽. KJ's, I know the same.
Hospital has.
Hospitals one, you know if they're going near end?
I'm not sure.
But there's nothing, nothing built, but they are... Library? He sent me some information in mid-December or so. And he's gonna give me what they're doing so far in Dillon. Hopefully here in the next week or two, they have some ideas, ridership on that. Because there's plenty...
I don't think a lot of people know about it, that's why, you know...
I'm gonna, Tina talks to a lot on the phone.
Do they know where the actual sites are, Tina, where they can go and catch the buzz?
I had some little maps that had all of that information on it, which I was giving out to them, but I ran out and Mr. Strickland hadn't given me any more lately.
You think we could reach out to him and see if he can get you some more maps?
Maybe something that guy will, we can learn through our website. That might be something else that'd be good to be in the paper, you know, current map. Someone brought up earlier about the J D Martin project. Dean and I had a conversation with, have you talked to their attorney? With the developer, a bond attorney, and one more person last week. They're trying to leverage some, some money through Florence Housing.
Your authority?
It's the City of Florence Housing Authority. And Florence Housing Authority has agreed to be a partner with them. We don't have a housing authority in Dillon. So probably in February or if March comes around, those folks made a team meeting to get you guys to agree to allow Florence Housing Authority to kind of be a partner with them, to leverage funds on their behalf. The bond attorney, I gave him Jack's information. He's gonna contact Jack to walk through some things there. My first question actually, they told us what they'd like to do was what liability did the city have? And at this point in time, I'm not knowing. And if they did bonds, what liability did it come back to the city on us being able to raise funds or borrow funds? Because we only can do eight percent or max of what the whole code could be, and it didn't have anything to do with that as well. But they'll be here either February or March.
Aren't we though, not on hook, but didn't we promise to cover...
We, we wrote a letter of support.
Okay.
And that's what they understood as well.
Project Housing Authority, would that, uh, do for the, even Dylan, resident Dylan adjust for that more particularly? Or would it put a housing authority site in there?
I don't know. Usually the housing authority sites are funded in part by local municipalities. That's how that works.
Possibly any client in the building.
Which is actually in Oak Grove County, I guess. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Ken?
General Fund, we've got a million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in our accounts. Year-to-date revenues versus two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen, we have a difference of $351,733 more in twenty than we did in nineteen, and that was due to the timing of the revenues coming in.
Okay. Something that didn't come in by...
Yeah, it was lower in nineteen.
July first.
And we had a little bit more in nineteen. Then the expenses, we had $121,487 more in two thousand and nineteen than we did in two thousand and twenty. Year-to-date. Less expenses.
I mean, that's good, yeah, all right.
Water and sewer. In our restricted accounts, in all of our accounts, we've got $3,638,750 in all our accounts, that's restricted and non-restricted. In our revenues, we were down $35,409 in two thousand and twenty year-to-date versus two thousand and nineteen year-to-date.
We got an explanation for that?
Brand revenue.
You don't take those out?
Yeah, I subtracted it out. It could be in your...
Well, when you think about it, yeah, you could figure it would come only for about six weeks.
They slowed down on three days.
Which would be in water sewer sales. And then in our expenses, we had $14,721 more in two thousand and nineteen than we did in two thousand and twenty year-to-date.
Yeah, looking at that, and if I did the math right, they done. Our expenses are about $75,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. Like fifty-one, ninety?
Fifty-two percent.
About seventy-five thousand. But our revenues...
Sixty-four and a half percent.
Yeah, our revenues were good.
Yeah. And that's normally on water and sewer works that way.
Okay.
Where on the general fund is, is...
Right.
By diverse.
Okay.
In our stormwater, we've got $70,872 in the account. Our revenues was up $3,607 in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen. Our expenses were up $96,531 in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen. So...
Two people were doing the, well, speaking of litigation grant.
Yeah, that was two thousand and five.
That was two thousand and five thousand, yeah.
Yeah, of that. The golf course, we were up $41,921 more in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen. They are playing a lot more, a lot of people blown out.
It is unbelievable, you have to see people out there, I've never seen, and they look like they've never been on a golf course. We don't care, and they're paying cart fee and out there playing. But it, it, it really is busy.
In two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen, we have the difference of what we transferred. We transferred $30,000 more in nineteen than we did in two thousand and twenty to help with the expenses. Okay, we've had $46,929 more expenses in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen. That's due to pump motors and mowers and stuff, equipment that had to be repaired.
About thirty thousand of that, was that one pump, but...
Summarizing that one.
Yeah.
Okay, our two percent hospitality funds, got a million, $141,151. We brought in $18,465 more in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen. And I'm getting ready to make a payment on the wellness center, which comes out of this, which is $239,474.
You know, in a, in a time where, you know, restaurants and all the COVID and the stuff to be, it just, you know, the big eighteen thousand dollars a day.
Without Zaxby's being a...
Without Zaxby's, you know what I think that is? You know, Starbucks. Starbucks brings a different clientele of, you know, like people want a, want a breakfast, but, I mean, people come off that highway for a five-dollar cup of coffee. They have this feeling. Well, we discussed last time, last meeting, about making an extra payment on the wellness center. I don't know, since you're making the payment now, if the council want to take up, make an extra payment to try to pay it?
Let's do that. Well, before we...
Why don't we think about that?
Well, let's talk with cities and help us, like, yeah.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Yeah.
We know the third just...
I, I... What's our, what's our rate on that? Like, it weren't much.
Interest rate?
Oh, I have.
The interest rate is 2.22%.
I don't know how much you... No, I understand, I'm just joking. It's just, uh...
The money's just gonna sit there?
Well, hopefully you come back in February with, with plans on, on some property purchases for that as well that we might wanna do.
And also we're, you know, um, we've got a plan for food, isn't that correct?
Well, initially when it was designed.
Yeah, I know you're not excited about that. Old people like the food.
I'm, I'm getting older.
They take over, yeah, you know, but...
I would hope you could have it open today if we did.
No, probably not. But, um, I just think that, you know, that's, I think there's a real value in that. And I think that, I think it could get a lot of use. You know, if we got to the two-year mark where we, you know, two years out from paying it off, if we could look at, you know, really looking at the design and what we wanted and start, you know, doing some bidding and stuff like that. And I'm not, I'm just, if that's what y'all wanna do. Well, I just, he says coming back with some...
Now, let me ask this question, Ken, and I think I'm saying this right. We have $240,000 in February. Is that our, would that give us four payments left?
Right.
Because we did it paid off on twenty-five.
So we have to pay the twenty-one, I mean, twenty-two, twenty-three, and forty?
Twenty-five, yeah, that would leave four payments.
I'm, I'm still, it blows my mind that...
Ron, let's hear it.
Well, that, that's gone by quick, that group, that. Because for what we're going through in one of our largest revenue producer that has been closed now or up in about six months.
There were a lot of people looking out, that don't go through the trackers.
Do you think you will win? We haven't, you haven't heard anything, have you, Ben, because of Zaxby's? Is that on, Ken?
All right, citizens report.
All right, citizens report.
You got, you want to, you'd like to-
Oh, I have some stuff, yeah. Um, let's all step up here. Going into the, uh, the South Spectrum, I think, and I could be wrong on this, but I'm from Dillon. But I think I'm the only computer architect in the state of South Carolina right now. So if I can help with the city stuff, please, I'm no computer.
But is this computer architect?
Yes. Uh, so my day job is I'm over every global thing. So I tell every bank what they can and can't do if it hooks up to me. So, uh, but in nutshell, I'm in charge of everything A to Z for technology. So from a networking perspective, from wireless LAN, WAN, um, you know, the building of the machine, every piece of software that runs on it, that's what I do.
We do need an idea. You know, my cell phone, I have to turn on my Wi-Fi off in order to use my cell phone in my office because it gets confused by hooking up so many Wi-fis.
I can tell you about your office because I worked on your office about ten years ago. So I could, your, your office is a little weird with the, the person you use. I'm going to that, there's a new lot of, so, yeah. Um, uh, secondly, I own a lot of the downtown area. And I'd be more than happy to help put repeaters. It depends on if you're going to do mesh. I don't know what they offered you at Spectrum. But, um, you can use my buildings if you'd like. I'm still building a lot of stuff, planning a lot of stuff out down there, so we'll figure that out. Um, there was something else about the, the PBR TA stuff. I would like to see, and I asked Mr. Vinnie about this, I think, a week ago. I'd like to know, A, how to add stocks to it, B, if there's any stocks already planned to do, and kind of look at more of a public transit expense. Um, especially I've been talking to Mr. Vinnie about maybe doing a plan of redevelopment to see where, if I'm talking to him, about this too, to see where we want to put what in the community as far as what the city's already planning versus what I'm going to be doing. So that way we don't fight each other intentionally. Um, there's something else that y'all brought up that was pretty good.
Cut your restaurant, that we y'all?
So, I'm Brian, I'm Brian Hall.
And your investment you have uptown, and can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Uh, sure, so I, um, over the last two years, I've been talking about seven figures so far into the Dillon area. I plan to do a lot more in the next few years. I'm from Dillon, um, akin to a lot of people in, in Dillon. Um, I have lived outside of Dillon for, I don't know, twenty-some years. Well, I was, this is what I was meant to for you, Donald, is, um, whenever the COVID pandemic hit, I actually lived in Manhattan. So that's my part-time home is in Manhattan. So I was there during the whole transition for COVID and all that. So I moved back to North Carolina where my primary house is at. I'm just going to move back to Dillon. I originally started doing some funding stuff in town for a family member and, um, just helping out. And I just grew up trying to get back to the community where I'm from. So that's what I'm doing now. Any of the little businesses that were going out of business, I've been buying them to just keep the jobs and keep the businesses, so.
Did you, you, you are now the proud owner of Hiller's Hill?
I am, I bought that, thank you. Thank y'all, appreciate it. Good headshot. Yeah, I know, I know, luckily I have, I've got a network of people that I work with. I can't take credit free, you know, I own it, but I know the general manager that runs that and she's fantastic. So we, um, we're should be rolling all that right now. And I'll probably be building, I'm buying some land now, I'll be talking to you about that soon, Jay. Uh, but I'm buying some land now to build. I'm actually going to take the almeys. I, I often buy the building that I'm in now, but I don't like the location. So I'm actually going to build a drive-through pavashu sushi place in Dillon. So we should have that for next December. So, so I'm working on different little projects. I've also offered, offered, uh, Mr. Vinnie to let me know what the city wants and needs. Um, so I'm more than willing to build something now, so, if I can, so.
Would, can you, can you break this just on the project that you got on Main Street, those three?
I would be more than happy to break you on that. So originally that project was going to be a bar and grill, that's what it was supposed to be. Um, I own three buildings that are contiguous, um, between the first day building and the pawn shop. So essentially that can do that a lot of money being spent. And, uh, we're having to redo it because the kitchen in that building is about eight by eight. I mean, we had a blank slate when we moved in and, uh, again, I was gone. So that kitchen's too small to do a bar and grill, if there's one fryer, et cetera, it costs you about eighty grand to, to fix that. How do you want to do that? So right now, construction will be wrapping up in the next week or two. Um, once construction is done, we're looking at about another thirty to forty-five days to do staff and training. That will be a downtown coffee spot. I'll be offering three Wi-Fi, um, at one location. So there'll be a coffee place, a breakfast place. So we'll be doing like nicer sandwiches, et cetera. What I've noticed from going around Dillon, um, kind of in, you know, for the last little bit is there's not really like a healthier option. I'm speaking as one that I like to eat. Um, I still need healthy options. So we'll be doing like a deli type thing for lunch and then grabbing those salads, or you can have custom salads done. There's nobody getting a Greek salad, et cetera. So we're doing that. And then about three o'clock, we can also do, we'll, we have our, um, alcohol license or whatnot, so we have all of that. We'll be doing Sunday sales. But, um, we'll be able to do, at three o'clock, we'll transfer over. One of the other buildings will turn to like a bar with food as well. So we'll have that option. But nothing that's going to be like, I'm not doing twenty-five cent PBR on tail. That's not what I want or desire for the downtown area, so. Yeah, so within the next two months roughly, we should be up and running that location and have that done. And then I've got a few, I'm, uh, partnering with David. We'll be opening a jewelry store downtown within the next couple of months. So that'll be another building that I own and I'll have a partner above that for whenever I'm in town, um, obviously, so. That's that one. And then I still don't know what to do with some of the other buildings, but I'm getting them repaired, fixed up. I have some issues with some of the other buildings collapsing onto mine and all of that, but, you know, I'm trying to buy what I can. Some people just won't settle. Yeah, I'm willing to help if I can, that's pretty much.
Just say in forty-five to sixty days, you'll have a new restaurant in uptown Dillon.
I will. And if you want to get a tax break, I'm more than happy to take it.
You know, there is opportunity there with, with the, um, you, um, well, investing in those areas if you can.
Opportunity zone, opportunity zone.
So I own eleven acres of downtown Durham and I'm one of the first investors that redid that area. Um, so I have most of my property, I'm, I'm a real estate developer as well in my part-time. Um, so I've done that. So I'm a big opportunity zone proponent. All of Dillon is an opportunity zone, which I love, trust me. Um, so I'm doing a lot of tax deferrals and that.
You want to do a hotel downtown?
I've actually, uh, I told Mr. Vinnie about that last week. He was going to introduce me to get more around. I, yeah, so. I thought about doing it downtown, I'm also going to model land. I'm not sure the best, but I'm looking in the city, so. And, um, my goal right now is I'm trying to identify land to build housing. As, as a real estate person, I'm, I'm buying a local person out, um, of their stuff that were retired. So I'm buying some properties from them and, um, a few other businesses, so. But in long story short, once I do all those acquisitions, I'll be, you know, better poised to, to build. So I'm looking to try to build a hundred, hundred and fifty houses under two hundred thousand dollars in the next degree of five years permitting and all of that, so. Um, what I'm seeing is Harbor Freight brought a ton of jobs in. And I actually helped, um, like, so Fred Dukes, all of those guys back in the day, I partnered with them for some of the money for that area years and years ago. But, um, long story short, Harbor Freight brought a ton of jobs in Dillon, which is great. But what I'm seeing is the people that-
Were living outside.
They're not living in Dillon. Myself, I own tons of property in Dillon. I have a place in Dillon. But, you know, coming from Manhattan, my girlfriend's from Manhattan, you know, trying to get her to Dillon is, let's just, trying to get her to come into Dillon is difficult, right? And, um, so I'm working on that to try and build things and, and make it just more powered with people that aren't just from here, that know people and have, you know, um, so, um, you know, we're actually building a house in Florence, so I'll be in Florence for a couple, yeah.
I remember thirty years ago, bringing my wife here.
Yep, thirty years ago, I loved, Dillon was, you had the cruise line, pretty early in the group, yeah.
The, um, we, we changed up the way we recruit doctors. And, um, we've moved to not taking them to Edgerton Manor, which is an awesome place, you know, and, and, you know, riding them around, uh, Florence, showing them houses. And we changed that to, uh, a, a group, you know, if they're thirty-five and forty years old, we, we put them with a group of people. And, um, they're their age and, you know, we've got some pretty spectacular people in Dillon. But that, that if you just come and you look at, you know, off here, you just ride through town, you're not going to see those people. All right, this is, you know, I would like to see, um, you know, somebody put a, a group together with the relatives that, say someone is coming to Harbor Freight, you know, the CEO or somebody that wants to move, move, is going to work here. Give them an opportunity to sit, to meet those people. I, I was in that position, you know, forty years ago. And I said, you know, I mean, I wanted that had a golf course and, and it had a hospital, and that was it. Now, my wife wanted a little bit more, but we came here, we met people our age, and we found out I can have life in Dillon. And, and that's how you recruit people. You ride them through town, they're not going to want to come. But if you meet the people and find out, you know, it can happen then. I'll have, you know, it's, it's about those relationships that you, that you, you're going to bring people.
No, and I don't disagree. The problem is that I see in the, in the city is there's no real good hangout spots, right? Even for me, like, I'm a big bourbon hater, that's what I like. I play golf too, I marvel at it, and I'm a better drinker. So, you know, but you can go out there-
Just win and fun, but.
Yeah, but you can do both, but, yeah, it's hard to find different spots. Like, you're not going to go, you know, if you want to eat, you might not even see somebody.
What usually happens is, uh, in Dillon, is you, is you, a lot, a lot happens on a golf cart. And in, when you get on a golf cart, you end up at somebody's house. And I, I would love to have places, I mean, you know, we're not Manhattan. But that's, well, I know, but those places are fun to go to. We do that in a different venue. We do that in the islands and people, you know, and that's, it's just different. But you're not going to see that i- if you don't know those people. And that's how we ought to move in a direction where we introduce potential people.
You said something earlier that, that I, I agree and, uh, I agree with. So you were talking about the first bank you're going to make in an incubator. That's way too big of a building for an incubator. I've ran an incubator before for different pieces. Uh, young professionals, if you build alliances like that, you can get them to partner in, make a better incubator down there, right? You can do businesses. I've partnered with local people trying to, you know, see who's got experience in what. What do we not have and what talent do we have in the area? Partner with them to deal with something, right? That's, the key word is partner. To get people like a doctor, if you want to get a doctor into Dillon, what they're really looking at is it's an underdeveloped area. They're not going to, their college is paid for. You can talk them into it easily because it's like, oh, I can come to Dillon and I don't have to pay this debt.
Square, target man.
Exactly, that's, that's why, that's how you're going to run a doctor in Dillon right now. But what Dillon has going for is, um, Dillon is the biggest city within thirty minutes of itself. And south, that is a very, very big thing, right? We have Lomerton, we have Florence, and Murrow Beach. There's nothing else around us, so everybody will come to, everyone should come to Dillon in that time and not lose stuff to Lomerton and Florence, which is what you don't want to do. So you've got to find reasons why people are going outside of the town. I'm trying to figure out something to do for the youth. I don't know what to do or feel. I'm talking about a skating rink and all this stuff that we, we do lose money from. But it's like, well, for me as an investor to take, even if I want to just net zero on it, it's, you know, to take that for something that's going to go one or two nights a week is tough, right? I mean, I couldn't put a million dollars in. And you'll find in Dillon, whenever I go to do something, it's, it's, um, you know, if you want to put something somewhere, certain things have gold or oil underneath them and it's like, that's very expensive, you know, apparently for, uh, for no reason.
Property.
Exactly, yeah, it's, it's certain things, it's just way too expensive, in, in my opinion, even as a developer, for what the area has. Um, so it does get tough. I'm trying to do what I can, but I'm, my goal with all of this is to hopefully start a wave. I'll come in and I'll take my own personal money, I'll put it in here and hopefully other people will start going insane, so.
Our long-term, and maybe you've been told, but, you know, and, and I think the, the council is ready. Our long-term is going out, um, you know, um, thirty-four and, and going to, you know, on the other side past all the industrial development. And our hope is, is that out there we, we, you know, can have some development, housing in that side.
So I actually called, um, you know, Sarah Bryant, I know her, I've bought a lot of stuff through her and all her family's real estate. And I've called and I said, you know, I'll buy this land. But somebody said you already bought it and Jack's price up to where, you know, if you want to buy it, you can't, you can't do that. I leave one tribe of land on there, it's three million dollars for like forty, fifty acres. Three million dollars for, for, okay. If you break that into acreage, right, you've got, you know, sixty-five thousand square feet an acre. If I'm going to put a home site, I'm going to own half an acre. So you're, you're, you can't build, I can't build that. And, uh, I'd have to build a million of homes, but they'd be fifteen hundred square foot of being homes. So, you know, that's just not going to work. Um, you could go further out than, than the city. So you need, I need to find land that's in the city. Talk to someone in the room that happens to have some land in the city. Um, but I need land that's in the city to be able to get back to the city. That's the thing, is, is doing that and then also working with the city to find out where we put what, right? Right now, if you look at Dillon holistically at the city, it's just stuffs everywhere. You just have mishmash here, there. There's no plan to it, so, you know, we've got to figure something like that. I don't want to take too much time, this could go on, um, you know, so. But I, I'm sorry, thank you. I'll try and come to, uh, the next couple of whatnot, but, um, I'm roaming around Dillon if anybody needs me. Uh, Mr. Vinnie and I can try and check pretty regularly. So if I can help with anything, I will. I would say specifically around any, any planning of housing or anything or the, uh, anything technical, I'd be more than happy to offer, so.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, no old business, new business, uh, ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one in Excelsior, Los Angeles property. Can we do both of those?
Yeah, both of them are.
Seventeen twenty-seven and seventeen thirty.
Both are on the same person in the same year, yeah.
I get a question.
I'd like to ask you.
Second. Those in favor? Of those?
All right, um, council members report.
Um, I've heard this through a third party, but I heard that a couple of our firemen here had to come and some of our volunteers had to step up. Is that true, Keith?
Yeah, we, we had two out.
Well, I want to tell, I, if you were to tell them for me, because I don't know who they were, tell them a very thank you because, you know, without the fire service, something happens, it could be really dire straits. So I want to tell them thank you. I want to go back, you just fell here, Mr. Yon, your breath are fresh here. Thank you. I want to let you tell that.
Okay.
Um, last month, you weren't here, but our uptown is a dying breed. Thirty in the storefront buildings. I'm asking this county to please look at putting something in our budget for a marketing director and a grant writer to help with people who want to make an investment in these new entrepreneurs coming to building. We have got to do something to all of town. I want to also ask Ben to please, for months, months, I've asked, condemn buildings uptown. We got to use our leverage. We got leverage to get them torn down.
What leverage do you have?
We got a lot of leverage. Mr. Jack, you asked for months to air to the properties. And I don't know where you're at. We've asked you for Alan Moss's property in Fulton United Methodist Church. Maybe the church needs to get together, that guy has seen the eyesore, and we put pressure on. But we got to get it torn down. We got Miss Mitchell, she's had that building for months. There's no sense in it. If you want to put a restaurant there, please get it torn down. Mr. McClellan's cleaning up his, his apartment. But still, we got, that's an eyesore right in the middle of our uptown. Something can be done, y'all. I go through this uptown every day that I go to work, and it is a disgrace. As a council member being here twelve years, I'm asking this county to please put something in our budget to help these entrepreneurs who want to come be here and build business. We can do it, y'all can do it.
I don't know if I can, can I, can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that, I, I, that was amazing. Also, me first of all, like I said earlier, I, I put, and I don't mind exposing numbers, I put a quarter million dollars into those three buildings on Main Street, okay? That's a substantial investment into, into Dillon, just for that area. I also own more buildings that I am rehabbing right now. But, uh, long story short, I have a building next to mine that keeps crumbling onto my building. And I offered to pay for that building and I offered to pay more than the building actually sold. Somebody sold the building because they were being fined. So they sold it to somebody else after I offered to pay more and then somebody else has not done anything to the building. And, and I keep having to repair my roof on that building because of that. So there's also been a massive bat issue downtown. Um, so I currently have a planned outside area, so picnic tables, some cornhole, to give the community at least something to do outside and some darts. You know, it's gonna be kinda bad to do that when it's got like bat, you know, everywhere, so. And I can't do anything about the bats, uh, unless you tell me I can do something about the bats, I'd be more than happy to, but, uh, I've heard that's kinda more the city thing, so. Um, I, I don't know what leverage we have.
Okay. We have some kind of leverage there where we can hold these people, speak to them buy.
If you notice, I've, I've offered to buy almost every building downtown, especially the ones that are condemned and revitalizing. I'll go in and just get them new, and then somebody can rent them, or I'll partner with somebody open a business. I've offered the downtown alliance, I talked to Steve about it two weeks ago, about using my money instead of their money to buy some of these buildings to rehab, that way the city can keep that money. I'll buy it, and I'll do whatever kind of contract the city wants to buy it back or whatever, I don't care. I just, I agree, the downtown, the way I look at this, and I've said this to the downtown alliance, there's no good way to drive into Dillon right now. We need to pick at least one way to be able to drive into Dillon that looks good, so when Dr. Wallace gets a new doctor, you can at least show him something, so. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, also, the, the building we asked about, or I, behind the finance department, the, the finance, American Finance, I think it is? You know, get the quote on that, get that building torn down, that is a eyesore, that's, I forgot the name of it, I, I don't remember the name.
Are you coming out of Madison? Did you come out of Bill's own engine?
I, I went to look that, I don't know if any of the council members went to look at it.
Any hour meeting with somebody listening.
Oh, we're talking about, um, um, in front of Mitchell's place.
Yep. Cross the council on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any hour got a meeting with us again this week? And, and again, I agree with one percent, and we can carry them back, but we'll never get our money back, and that's, you know what I'm saying?
And I understand, but sometimes you gotta move forward and do this to make people like this come to us and say, he's really coming. We haven't had a restaurant in uptown in one, two and a half, three years. I'm gonna give breath of fresh air, man.
Thank you. I'll be willing to buy the buildings, if you condemn it, I'll be willing to buy them, if I can help out, I will, so.
Which batch building?
No, I agree. But also, we also, you, you were saying you tried to buy, but they won't sell.
Well, you can do them, I'm pretty sure they're gonna do that versus paying a bunch of fees, I mean, I'm just gonna be on.
I'm a good one, Dr. Wallace, I know, but, um, like I said, thank you for your breath of fresh air. Um, and lastly, the police cars, I know Dr. Wallace mentioned it. I seen a police car the other day, and I thought we were gonna drive to Crown Bees anymore. I thought we had purchased enough from the chargers to the...
We got all the new ones in now and on the road.
All right, so nobody should be driving to Crown Bees?
Unless, unless they got it for a purpose to get it to school or ones in the shop or something.
All right, so is the laptops being installed?
Laptops are in all these, um, vehicles.
Okay, and they're working?
They're working.
Okay, thank you.
And then with the, with the wifi, we can help us more.
That would, I'll put it.
All right.
Yes. Um, another problem I was looking for, I, I don't think, eminent domain, I hate to beat a dead horse, but, you know, everything I've read on it, I don't know why we couldn't find an angle in eminent domain for certain properties downtown.
That's a legal question.
But I...
I mean, don't think I know about this, eminent domain, you can, you can do two things with nothing in the city, but you don't get free.
Well, nothing's free. The point is, I hear other cities doing it, and I just wish that I knew how they were doing it. But I, I'm gonna make it a point, maybe on this next meeting, I, I'm gonna go out and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna figure that out, and I'm gonna bring that back to us. What, what can be done? Also, and I appreciate, thanks goes out to you, Brad, um, helping us to try to regroom Dillon, I know that's a tough job. I appreciate you offering your, um, professional assistance in IT area. I've got another, a person that called me, said that he'd be willing to assist us in anything in hydraulic and truck area, and it's a really good person, and he would, he's even asked me anything we need, it, it wouldn't even charge, he would come and assist you.
He knew Bert afterwards made up a deal.
And he knows he is, but.
I think I know you, governor.
He just wants to, these individuals called me, just like Brad, they wanna give to the community and make the community better. And I just think if more people would do that, we, we would have, we would have a nice place to live, and people would come back to us. Um, also Bert, um, I asked Bert, there were a lot of bad places that rose in, in town, and of course, he was taking attention to some of them that were really bad, DOT's kinda behind, I think he has some COVID issues, but I really appreciate his services and that, I had a lot of calls, um, holes all over down. And I think about all the field up down, he knows.
Still out on Johnson Drive, and I know you did get that spot fixed on Main Street.
We tried to fix that, and that's kind of a little bad, but.
Now, the benchmark report, we get it back, um, I mean, the question is, where do we go from here? I know whatever the proposed is pretty expensive, but I'm, I'm just... I mean, I've had so many people hit me from all sides about what, things that need to be done downtown. I just think we need to do some drastic measures downtown just to regroom it. And whatever that takes to make these businesses shine and make them be productive, I think that's the key integral part to keeping our downtown viable. Another thing, uh, I had a good many calls over this past month on Duke Powers' project where they were changing all their lights, rotating them to LED lighting, and they had noticed, a lot of people called me, and you probably had some to call you, saying it seems like they've stopped, and...
I know what they were doing, they were taking out those that, the, the yellow lights, they were not, they were, have not taken, taken those out unless they go out and they have an issue.
Right.
The old circular, like porch light, and all, those they took out, and then the other big deal. But if they steal the yellow lights, they only replace those when they either go out or they have an issue with the fixture.
And they just replace it with that.
The LED was very costly in this community, I mean, it's really, uh, you know, I think it's keeping, people from breaking in. I see a lot more areas downtown, a lot lit up, a lot more than they have been, it's eliminated.
It just changed it out of my house, it's there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot brighter, I mean, I'll...
Cause you have a yellow one, and you still have a problem with it.
It does, the lights in the whole world.
And another thing really big for downtown is, hopefully, in this stormwater research that we're having done right now, that we can come to some kind of, um, way forward with that, and hopefully they have some good suggestions for us to do. Cause, um, you know, I just hate to see water anywhere stand downtown at this point. Cause I'm afraid that it deters people from coming to do a business Dillon, it looks like a lake when we had two, three inches of water around. Fix more, some more than others, but it's getting to affect a lot more, a few, especially all the way down First Avenue. Have you heard anything back from them, what?
I did, yes, yeah, probably the, heard some of it, some of it.
Still busy with them. Anyway, that's all I have, Doc, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, I, I can finish about nine this week. Uh, I go, I'm, but one, one thing I'm, I think is, Dillon on Main Street, they got a fake one in there and no car, what do they, what do they have to do about those? What do they have to do about them? They got a crime building, that's the name, crime building, one did he got a... But he do, he take a front, put a front, a tank building, but then you see all the brush in there, and they ain't got no car for that. First car ain't nothing doing, and did he get some money from us, too?
Yes, sir, he, he did receive a hundred percent grant.
Right, so what do they have to do about him and that building?
Um, we're consulting with a legal expert, and, um, I'm just seeing if he can...
But can you condemn it?
Um, the building's already condemned.
Huh?
The building's already condemned.
Already condemned?
Yes, sir. I forgot about that, too, just for the record. I was going to put anything uptown, uh, in, put a stage in the back, keep it open, and then local businesses could come in and have a booth on the weekends, and just have some kind of a live event for people out.
Don't sound so simple, but just people just don't sell their property, I just don't know why.
I mean, you can tear it down, you can't tear it down?
It's already gone.
Whoa, then.
Love you could go there and lean on it, it'll go down.
So, why, why can't you do that? But there's a problem with, can, can y'all tear it, come to them now?
With any commercial property that will, but, you know.
But I, I might use them.
Now, someone like Brad could probably divert that with something really good, and, and it does have potential, I've looked at it. You could have a nursery behind it, plant nursery, there's a thousand things. I've had clients that call and say, look, we'd have a plant nursery right there behind it, where up into the stars, got a, got a front, beautiful run to come in, have a nice business there, but they won't do it.
And so the good spot in the middle of the block, if, if you build a venue there, people have to walk by all the other businesses to get to it, that's my thought, being in the middle, have everybody walk past it, on the weekends, it would be a popular spot. You have plenty of parking behind, so.
Have you ever been on the Marley's? It's just like that. It's open in the middle, lights across, vapories on each side, it has a small tin roof over each side, and it's completely open. And they've taken these buildings and done that to produce this business called Marley's.
Uh, what I did notice, beside the theater downtown, somebody, I don't know if y'all did that, but it looks really good. That, that looks really, really good, I just noticed that a couple of weeks ago, so.
It looks nice.
Yeah.
And we did that probably six years ago. Six, seven years ago, maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Probably a year ago. That's a little bit.
Yeah. No, uh...
I guess I'm lost.
As I, I got, I seen about, I'm a friend down in, uh, by, I'm trying to make sense of him and that.
Thank you.
Well, I wanna give, um, nice to meet you, I would, I would like to see you, once you got your mask on, I would...
Got a long beard, so.
I'm trying to follow the protocols, I'm, again, being in Manhattan when this happened, you know? Uh, Benny, what, before we stand on the, the burnt house?
Yes, sir. Um, I think we got Bert correct in the room, we, we submit the paperwork, Bert, I think there's something wrong with our equipment or something.
Oh, okay.
We got ten houses, one of us included, that's one of the first.
I was hoping to manage some of them as well.
Okay, and hats off, um, Keith, them this morning, they helped out the county in. You always, those guys always come with, at Nick call, they didn't have nobody there, and the city stepped in, also. But I was sitting far apart in the yellow county, and maybe Bert, you can call that, if we got a brand new trash truck, maybe you can help you out, because when we didn't have this, somebody had to come help us out.
We've talked about that, very close to having to.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh, let's do a journey?
I'm gonna make a question, I second.
All right.